Six thirty, I'm gonna call the Joshua City Council order one-on-one, South Main, Joshua, Texas. This is an open meeting, subject to the open meeting laws, the state of Texas. We do have a public forum where citizens can come up and speak. You are limited to three minutes, and the council is not allowed to do any deliberation. So if anybody was wanting to speak before the council, if you fill out one of the forums that's over here on my left, and turn it into the city secretary. I know a couple of you have filled out forums. If it's on a particular agenda item, I'm gonna wait until we have that agenda item, and then that's when I'll ask you to speak. This time, we do have a quorum present. I'm gonna ask Merle Breitenstein to let us in our pledge, followed by the invocation from Pastor Copeland.
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Everybody remain standing for the prayer.
Ready to go to the night. Lord Jesus, we thank you for those gathered here this evening. Thank you for the hearts of our leaders that desire to have your blessings and direction upon their decisions. God, I'm asking you to provide guidance and wisdom for each topic addressed here tonight, the grace and the mercy to come together and be united towards the efforts to better our community. Help us tonight to have clarity in thought, and in our communication, to have the right spirit and right mindset as we face each challenge before us. Bless each one here tonight. Lead us, guide us, and direct us in everything we do. Bring you glory and honor. In the master's name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
All right, we'll start with our work session. First item on the work session is to review and discuss questions related to the budget report and financial statements for May 2021. Does anybody have any questions on the budget?
Good question. Under park maintenance, are we putting personnel under like Public Works for that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's where they show up for this. Next year's budget building moves back.
Okay.
Gotcha. Anybody else? Scott?
Yeah. Are we about to get the calculations for the miscellaneous expenditures in each of these departments fixed? I mean, you got two thousand three hundred and sixty-nine percent.
We have the calculation. We have the numbers. We have the money. What we didn't do is a mid-year budget amendment, so they won't be cleared up. They won't be balanced out until we do the end of year amendment in September, October, well, October.
So these percentages are on stage.
But just understand that that money is in-house and received, so we're not out anything.
So same way with expenditures.
Correct. Okay.
Anything else? Anybody here? All right. Next item is review and discuss planning and zoning ordinance, section five point five point four accessory building regulations, swimming pool setback. Erin?
I did. I've done this before.
You have Mr. Lee Master here with.
Okay.
I can't get sound on this.
Would you mind stating your name and address, please, sir?
Dustin LaMaster, seven twenty-four conveyor.
Okay.
Right now, the ordinance is eight foot off the property line to the swimming pool water. Seems a little unorthodox. Surrounding towns, everybody's four, and so that's double what that is. So it pretty much deteriorates a lot of people in these new subdivisions, especially Cooper Valley, Heritage, all these new ones, from allowing them to get a swimming pool. And so I guess I just wanted to hear why it was so far away. I don't know a single town of the fifteen, twenty towns we work in around here that is that far. The most is four foot or five foot. They're about the most credible place to ever work for it. And so I guess I was just curious. What's the reasoning behind it? If there is reasoning, or this is just something old that was, you know, keeps going through and through and through?
Right. I would guess it's something old. Anybody have any idea how long that's been there?
I didn't look to see specifically in this past. It has been on there for some time. I don't know that. I know initially, some of the concern was that so many of the utilities were above ground, where now is they're not. Of course, if they are in there, then that can be dealt with for the dismount. But as far as why it's eight foot now, I don't know that there is good reason. I think it's something that's just never been cleared up or never been changed.
Right. And when it comes to the utilities overhead and that kind of stuff, we pretty much work with on or go off, or say twelve foot off of the overhead, that kind of stuff. But like I said, that was my concern this year.
As far as our specific regulation for it.
Right.
Really doesn't matter, because our issues are the utility issues, and they deal with them themselves.
Okay. I know they had in the packet that they had looked at several of the other cities, and they were smaller. So would everybody be okay with having them put together an ordinance, and maybe changing that?
Be okay with it.
All right. So go ahead and put an ordinance together, and we'll see if we can get that taken care of for you.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Next item is review and discuss code ordinance, section thirteen point zero four point zero three one dash R regarding procedures for littering of grass clippings. I had asked this to be put on here, and to sort of work with our code enforcement. I know we've had a lot of rain, and there's been a lot of grass clippings, and most of the time, people are pretty good about trying to keep their clippings in the yard. But for some reason, everybody's taken to put their clippings out in the street. What a lot of people don't realize, we have spent several million dollars in this city on drainage, and we've got a couple of million more that we're gonna be spending over the next few years. We're gonna probably be having to add an impact fee specifically for drainage. And the number one cause of drainage issues is grass clippings getting in there. You blow them out in the street, we get a big rain, it goes down, it fills up the culverts everywhere else, and then we got a drainage problem again. So what I had suggested was, our code enforcement, when he's driving the neighborhoods, if he sees grass clippings out in the street at a particular house, we're gonna have a little door hanger that he can put on the door and just say, hey, you know, we've got an ordinance that prohibits that. So you've got grass out here. We would appreciate it in the future if you would just blow your grass clippings back onto your yard. The easiest way to do it is just when you're mowing, don't mow the grass out to the street, mow to the inside. And we'll see if that doesn't take care of it. If that doesn't take care of it, then we'll have to start enforcing that and writing tickets. But I'd rather just do it to where everybody's aware of what the situation is. This is gonna be money out of your pocket if we don't get this situation resolved. So I wanted to get some council comment, and see if everybody else is okay with that, or if they see something different, or.
It's pretty standard, almost any other town.
My question is, what about when the city's cleaning their right of way, where the grass clipping's going? They're going right into the ditch. They're not bagging them out of the ditch when Public Works is clearing any of the right of ways that they have or anything, are they? I'm sorry, what'd you say? When Public Works is out mowing, are they making sure their clippings aren't going into the ditches and stuff?
No.
So we can't force on our citizens what we don't do ourselves.
I mean, this is more for like in the street, right? Like in the street going.
They're still going in the drainage.
It's semantics, really. It's a matter of, we're working to get there. We're not quite there yet, but there are some areas that we have been, where it stays low enough now. Problem now is everything's so tall. It's very visible. We do do some things to gather up some of that stuff, but it's, I can't say that it's.
I just think we've gotta be real careful, you know, telling our citizens, no, you can't do this, when you can watch Public Works.
Well, it's not us telling them. It's state law that prohibits doing that.
I understand that. I understand that, but it's still the same thing.
It's also, many of the areas where we do have that, where there are wide areas where we're mowing, where you get the big help, but the brush hog, we got implements in place for runoff in those areas too. So we do catch a lot of it. We clean those areas out, whether it's boulder gavins, or whether it's silt fence, or in those areas, we do have that stuff. Where we have to clean those, but we don't rake and bag grass.
And even when they do it up here, I've seen them, they blow it all back into the yard up here when they're mowing here, down at Joshua Station.
I've seen them do it too, but also there's other places that they're not doing. And I just, the tone to take with our citizens, you know, we're going to start forcing this, when sometimes our Public Works isn't doing what we're asking our citizens to do, is the wrong tone to take. You know, we would like for our citizens to do this so we don't have to enforce it. You know, threatening them, I don't like. I think that was the wrong tone to take.
No, we don't spend millions of dollars and just keep them going like it is.
No, you're absolutely right. We need to stop it. I do it, you know, but we gotta be careful.
Well, we've gotta start somewhere. And I think, you know, telling the Public Works to watch out too. I think we all need to do it. But I don't think we say, well, let's just don't worry about it anymore again.
Say we weren't supposed to worry about it.
You're saying we shouldn't be enforcing it.
Throw active approach to it. And typically, you know, we had this a few years ago, we sent letters out to some of the lawn maintenance companies that we knew that were in the area. We sent stuff out. When we saw it happening, almost everyone that we talked to, they get it. We've never had to write a ticket for it. So it's usually just talking to them, explaining to them what the guideline is. So we've already structured code enforcement to start down that path. We're already doing advertising. It's been on our website, Facebook. It'll be in a mail-out going out this month, and then the door hangers. And so we'll start watching it. And most of the time, everybody's, if I have a problem, they do it. And I don't think there's gonna be a problem. But we just need to keep it out. And so that's what we'll do.
And I could talk to Public Works and tell them to.
Absolutely.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, also, I think the state ordinance you're talking about only refers to underground storm drains. I don't think that it refers to an actual open-top ditch.
Well, it refers to waterways, and Village Creek is listed as a waterway of the state.
Okay.
And most of our drainage lines up there. So that's why it has to be in our stormwater maintenance plan. And so that's where it is. But we don't want to write a bunch of tickets. We'd rather get people to apply. And they will.
Anybody else say anything? All right. Next is review and discuss questions related to the proposed changes to the employee policy. Amber?
Oh, my dear, you're asleep.
That's right.
You got any questions?
I didn't know you could speak.
She just passed her certification exam for the Senior Professional in Human Resources Certification. So, don't be sensitive. So she comes very well credentialed, and y'all are gonna be seeing a lot of that over the next few months as she makes her way through.
So I apologize now for all the reading. This is necessary. There were a couple of policies that I flagged. Joe and I had talked a little bit about a few changes on the thirteen point one hour works. Since we have a couple of different departments that work different schedules, like for instance, here we work seven thirty to five thirty, animal control works eight to five, and Public Works may work something a little bit different. So on the first page, under other employees, says the regular work day normally begins at eight AM to five PM. We're gonna change that to seven thirty AM to five thirty PM. And then below this, it says all those employees in some departments may have different work hours. So I was kinda making an adjustment on that one.
We still doing the half-day Friday thing?
Yeah, nothing is changing schedule-wise. The only schedule that really is changing is gonna be the fire department schedule. As you know, back in February, we brought on three full-time firefighters in order to get them in compliance with FLSA guidelines. They had established a twenty-eight day work period. So instead of like a normal employee who works a forty-hour, two-week period, or like police officers, they work a whole fourteen-day work period. Now, we're gonna move the fire guys to a fourteen-day work period. It's more for administrative purposes, to make sure that their time sheets are being calculated properly, because you have to look back at previous work periods to check and see when overtime actually started to accrue. So it is a little bit of extra work. And I think administratively, it's a lot cleaner to make them align with these department and enjoying the sanity too. I always joke about firefighters, Matt, but there is such a thing. The other policy change that Joe and I had discussed was on the personal appearance and dress code under the attire standards. This is policy twenty-two point one. I tried putting them in order, but I'm not sure how y'all got them. We did take out, under attire standards, where it talks about professional appearance for meetings, special events, presentations, council meetings, or when presenting on a city on special occasions, to remove the example. We don't want to make it where everybody has to wear a suit and tie or business professional or.
Put her out by her lungs, if she got moved to be, I mean, like, go to a meeting in a two or three-piece suit.
I'm surprised you didn't pay me to leave it in here. So we removed the example, because it does say preferred. It doesn't stand apart. So we just remove the example. And then on the holiday hour, holiday leave, we did add two holidays, one day a personal day, and then Veterans Day. But going back to where everybody is kind of on a different work schedule, we decided to change, under the non-exempt full-time employees, to make it to where, instead of giving them like designated either eight, nine, or four hours, because like for me, if a holiday falls on a Monday, I work nine hours a day. So, but if it's on a Friday, we only work four. So in order to make it as clean as possible, I changed the wording on here to say, non-exempt full-time employees who are required to work on official city paid holiday will be paid normal wages for the hours worked on the holiday and straight time for the holiday hours. So like fire and police both, they work either twelve-hour shift or a twenty-four-hour shift. So what are y'all's shifts on fire? What are your start times on twelve hours? Okay, so they'll pass over another day. So if they worked on one side, however many hours they worked on that holiday, that's how many they receive. Like with fire, for instance, they'll work, one employee will work seven hours on that, the other one will work seventeen. So they'll either get seven hours of holiday pay or seventeen hours. We're basically just making them whole. I did change those slightly. And that was really the only changes that I had made since I received those. Do you have questions on any specific policies?
I just think that one on the longevity pay. Like I said, I.
And that's gonna be discussed in the work session. It's not.
Oh, we're in the work session.
This is the work. I didn't know if we were gonna set it separately, or.
You're here.
Yes. So longevity, you and I have spoken, I think historically, it's been four dollars a week for your service.
I would change it. It seems like we've gone, it's fluctuated.
Every year, based on the budget. So, and the policy does state that as something to change. So there is a significant change to the longevity policy, because it does implement a service recognition piece to it. So not only are they getting paid, but we'll give them, depending on the milestone that they're at, they'll get a day off here, or two days off. But we did need to discuss the amount of longevity paid.
Like I said, I'd like to see that. I mean, there might be years that we can do really well. There might be years that we've had other issues, might not be able to do as much. So I'd rather still leave that up as a budget item each year. I don't have a problem saying we're gonna do longevity pay every year, but I think we.
Obligated by law, fire department.
Yes, with firefighters, they are required minimum.
Right.
So I think by stating that it's gonna be there, we're fulfilling that obligation.
So technically, what we can do right now is, because I have five dollars in here, what we could do is change it to four right now as it stands. And then when the budget is finalized, then we could revise it. As long as you're okay with the policy itself, if it's the dollar amount that's in question, we can certainly change that.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, I know in the past, like I said, we've always, well, we haven't had the paid firefighters. We've paid the volunteers longevity. So we haven't had any paid firefighters in the past. So.
Exactly.
Again, that's just something new. So I don't know. Personally, I'd rather make it a budget item. So we're gonna have it, but, you know, look at it every year and see what we can do.
My suggestion would be to change it to whatever the pay is currently, the four dollars. And then if you're okay with the policy itself, accept the policy. So we can establish the longevity, or not the longevity, but the service recognition piece of it, and go from there. Or we wait to pass this with the budget.
Like I said, I'm okay with, you know, recognizing them and giving them the extra stuff. I guess my hangup's just on the set the dollar amount.
Do you think it would be better served to, this is, this one was just in the first discussion, would it be better served to hold this until ten one to pass it with the budget?
All right. That's fine.
And then there were two other ones, the performance evaluation. I would like to be changing it up a little bit. So we have two evaluations each year, a mid-year and the main annual evaluation. The mid-year would serve as like a checkpoint to make sure they're meeting their goals. It's a good time to kind of make sure there's not any performance issues that you can correct before they really become a problem. Also, my philosophy on performance evaluations, especially with a small city, they are performance-based. But in the way that I would like to see this done is, if these are aligned correctly with the budget, because we determine ahead of time what we can afford as far as a COLA or any type of year increases. But if you're working here, you're here, and you're doing your job. But if you're not doing your job, and you're not meeting the expectations, then you're not gonna be here. So this, with this, as long as, the form itself, it's either you meet the expectations or you do not. There's no scale. It's too hard to put a number on performance. It's either you're doing your job or you're not. So I would like to see moving more to, yes, it is still performance-based, but I'd like to not give merits here and there. I'd like to include in the budget, and then each year, once everybody's evaluations are done, and everybody's gonna get whatever raise that we implement for it. It's a little bit different. But when, in previous years, this is what we've been doing too, and it seems to work really well, you get into doing performance evaluation, then you can get into trouble real quick in the HR world, with people putting too much detail on an evaluation work. It's really easy to not, I don't wanna see, have like favors as a result of all of them, like trying to compare one employee to the other with their, either meeting in or not.
And another place I'd like to see a change was, you had on the vacation, you know, our standard was two weeks to begin with, then it goes to three weeks at five years, and four weeks at ten years. And you had put in there for the exempt employees to start them out at three weeks. But then it was weird. You said they needed to work twelve years before they could get four weeks. I'd like, I just personally would like to see us go back. I don't have a problem if maybe on exempt, we say, hey, after two years, you can go to three weeks. But I don't like having a big disparity in vacation time between the exempt and non-exempt. And I wouldn't have a problem with putting on exempt employees, say after ten years, they get four weeks. So let's bring in that part where you'd get four weeks a little quicker. But I don't know. See what everybody else thinks.
So I left, as far as the non-exempt employees, the accrual rate, I guess you could call it, is the same. I didn't touch anything. I left the policy as it said. I just put it into a box, where you kind of lays it out a little bit better. On the exempt employees, I did separate them out, give them five extra days. Because right now, as it stands, there's no differentiation between, it's what we all get the same. Typically, not always, but typically, your salaried employees work more. So I think it would be nice to give them a little extra perk to take the time off. Also, in one of the other policies up for discussion, we'll talk a little bit about mandatory time or comp time. So I guess, if you look at it one way, you could say, if we implemented comp time, gave non-exempt employees up to forty hours, essentially, we would still have the same. We both have fifteen days annually if they chose to do comp time instead of being paid overtime. So it does somewhat keep it balanced, but it does separate exempt from non-exempt as far as accrual rates.
Anybody else couldn't comment on that?
I kind of agree with you. I think everybody else is getting about the same. I think comp time's the better way to go.
It looks like comp time is not used for salaried employees, because we don't get overtime. And comp time accrues at time and a half. It's basically, some cities use it like just, like you have an overtime budget within your budget, and sometimes we go over our overtime. So then you could say, hey, our overtime budget's getting up there. Now you need to start, the only thing we have left is you have to take comp time instead. So sometimes it's just like a budgetary item, but depending on where you're at in your life cycle, I would much prefer having time off than overtime spending my money. So it depends on employee and what they value. Some of them are gonna value the money more in like that, or they may not value the money. I would rather have time off and spend. So typically, you don't, some cities do allow their salaried employees comp time, but then when they leave and you give them comp time, you're gonna, comp time, by law, you're required to pay out.
Some cities with exempt employees will have something called exempt leave, and just pop into your account forty hours, because of the amount of time you spend at meetings outside the work day and council meetings, work day meetings. And I know a couple of them, they just, every year, they throw in forty hours for exempt employees, and they get to use it. It doesn't carry over from year to year, and you don't get, if you quit, you don't get paid for it. It's just kind of recognition that you get time off.
That I would be willing to do. So maybe you could incorporate what he said. No, no, it's different. The deal is, is your way, that accrues and can keep going. We have to buy it back. We're giving you the extra week, but if you don't use it, it's gone. You can't cash it in. So.
But if I'm only keeping, we're not gonna get paid out any more than four weeks anyway, regardless if I'm exempt or non-exempt. So it still shouldn't cost you the same if somebody works separate, because there's a limit. The city only pays out.
I'm missing what you're saying completely, because what I'm.
The maximum payout upon separation.
No, we're not talking about that. We're talking about from day one, whether you're getting three weeks because you're an exempt employee. I think the two weeks, but throw in the forty hours. But that forty hours doesn't get to carry over. So you can take two weeks, or you can take three weeks. But if you don't take any vacation, you can only carry over two weeks. You can't carry over three. Under your, what's in here now, you would be able to carry over three weeks if you didn't take it. So why don't you get with Terry and see, sort of iron that one out, and let's see what that looks like, then. But I like that better. I don't know. Anybody else?
I agree.
Let me ask you, how often, so would you start off with two weeks for exempt employees?
Yeah, and then give them the forty hours.
To how many years they get two weeks? When do they go to?
Just like the other people, at five years, you'd go to three weeks, and at ten years, you'd go to four. But you'd always get that extra forty. You just couldn't sell it or carry it over.
When do you, when do you give the forty weeks, not the extra, not until after so many years?
No, I think you do. You could accrue it, like, or do they give it to them on day one, or?
They give them on day one.
That's fine.
And they say, you get forty hours. And then on, then it kind of rolls over, either fiscal year or January first, you get additional forty hours. If you don't use it, you lose that forty hours. Next year, you'll get another forty hours.
I guess my point is, neither, either way, we're not gonna be paid out more than four weeks. In my mind, more than just.
It's different.
Well, I mean, that, either way.
Forty hours, forty hours.
And that's still gonna be there, so it's.
Yeah. Get that, and then we can compare the two. And I'll show you what I think are the differences. Maybe they're not. Somebody else have anything?
I do. Under twenty-seven point four, the lunch and meal period, did you change anything there?
It's a new policy.
Okay. So is that, I mean, is that a pretty standard policy? Like, I understand that by law, they don't have to be given a lunch period, but I think, just by not, you know what I'm saying? By just the way that it's worded, kind of worded to a way that somebody were to take a lunch break in there.
It's very different. It's act, it's federal law, but so it is, it's law-based.
No, you're fine. I'm just saying, so by, I mean.
I'm just saying so about, I mean, like the way that it's worded is basically saying that you shouldn't expect a lunch break when you come here. I mean, it's true, I mean, am I right?
Yes, but it's typically.
Everybody else takes a lunch break. I'm just saying, I mean, I get that it's to the letter of the law, but just by the way that this is written, it's basically saying, if you come to work for City of Joshua, don't expect to get a, if you get one, it's a privilege. You know what I mean?
Make it sound pretty mean.
Well, I mean, that's how I would read it if I was in new higher orientation, it would be like, oh, you're not.
So like, in instance, like say Public Works, say they work seven to three thirty, they may only get a thirty minute lunch to make up for the time that they get off early. So I think it leaves it somewhat open-ended where we could get like, say if we worked, instead of working seven thirty to five thirty, if I worked seven thirty six thirty or seven thirty to six, I'd get an hour and a half. I think it kind of leaves it open-ended.
So basically, what you're, you're asking for Robert is, instead of saying maybe offered, say something like, you know, lunch periods are offered at the discretion of the department head.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I get, are scheduled by the department head or, or whatever. It needs to be so, I, I'm, you're right.
Yeah, who says the department head or there doesn't need can determine whether a lunch period will be offered in addition to scheduling and deciding the duration of lunch.
Right, and I guess the way that I'm reading it is essentially like, well, if I work for Public Works and Kristen says I can have a lunch break, then I'm good, but if I'm working for Parks and Rec and he says no, like where's the, you know what I mean? Like each department head just kind of gets to say, oh yeah, we're, we're going to eat lunch or no, we're not.
There are some days where they may not get a lunch, like if they have a major storm and they're, they're, they may not even want to.
I know, I totally, yeah, I totally understand, I'm just saying, all right, I mean.
The biggest thing is to make sure that they're being paid overtime or compensated according to the law. Because a lot of times, like working lunch, you shouldn't be clocking out, you're sitting in your desk, and that's pretty much what it is.
There are a lot of thorough guidelines on how you determine lunch period. If you work less than twenty minutes, to make that lunch break of twenty minutes or less, you're at your desk need of not having a lunch break. And if you do anything over twenty minutes, you both have the uh, thorough guidelines determined, or you're actually away from work and you get into, for example, people had a, a animal control, for example, they have still maybe eating their lunch, but someone comes in, they're required to assist them, and they're determined not to have had a lunch break during that period, and they get paid for that time. So there are, there, there are a lot of, lot of thorough guidelines of the Fair Labor Standards Act for how you determine that. It really relates mostly to overtime, whether you take someone into overtime or you have to work a lunch break. So I, I think there's quite some language you can put in there to clarify that. It is, we don't want to put in there, you get an hour lunch break every day, no matter what, because it's sort of departmental.
You have to be too careful fully defining it.
Yeah, exactly, I think we should have some. We could put some language in there that would make it a little um, emphasize that like it, it may not say, I mean, we don't want to sound like, you know, your supervisor every day can say, I'm sorry, I never got your lunch break. We can change that wording, I think, to maybe address that.
I think that would be good.
Also don't want to hit the employee's discretion because then they say, well, I didn't take lunch today, I'm leaving early, and they're just gone.
Yeah, right.
You're expecting them to be there.
Yeah, no, that's covered in there too also, but.
Yeah. Language to, to address that, they're not, not, not too percolating.
All right, anybody else have anything? All right, well, I guess work on those changes and then we can send those out and uh, get them out to everybody and let everybody review them again.
The vacation policy and the rest of the meal period. It's just those two major changes, or not major, but.
Well, like I said, the longevity, the vacation and then whatever that.
So we want to wait until.
Yeah, budget time. Yeah, go ahead and make the, we're going to work with Terry and come up with the changes, send them out to everybody and then we'll vote on it, like you said, August or something.
Fair, kind of one more thing, just, just so you know, we, most of this, these changes are bringing us current.
Sure.
Kind of working to be, we are not having employees skating off lunch and leaving early. Everybody's doing what's expected of them, so it's not, we're not really trying to fix a problem here, we're just trying not to have one.
Sure, and I get that, and it's sort of like Robert said, that, you know, we want to make sure that we got the wording where we want it. We're making the changes now, we're coming up, but we want to make sure that is our intent. And I think that's all we're talking about, is just making sure we got the right intent. All right, anybody have any questions regarding any of the regular session agenda items? All right, uh, next is public forum. The only speakers I have will be talking about a little bit later when we get to the, the speed limit. Uh, I do have a proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas Miss Texas Scholarship Organization Inc. has a rich history of empowering young women to achieve their dreams and goals. Larger than young women who have, larger than young women who have held the title of Miss Texas is the volunteer team and Miss Texas family who have dedicated their lives to ensure these young women have every opportunity available to them through this transformational pageant system. Miss Texas has been wearing the crown for eighty-four years originating in nineteen thirty-seven. Whereas Alexia, did I say that right? Carter currently holds the title of Miss Joshua's outstanding team. And whereas Alexia has received many academic honors such as pre-AP level courses, star master's grade level A honor roll, and has been part of the gifted and talented program since first grade. And whereas Alexia's goal to serve as a role model to empower supports and encourages others to be themselves by spreading kindness. Whereas Alexia's hard work and dedication has rendered service to young women in this community and throughout the state, which deserves special recognition and appreciation. And now therefore, I, Joe Haller, Mayor of the City of Joshua, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one as Alexia Carter Day. Want to get a picture, handing that off?
The backup pepper up.
All right, next item is our consent agenda. On the consent agenda tonight, we have approval of the minutes from the May tenth, twenty twenty-one and May twentieth, twenty-one. Also consider an interlocal agreement with Region Eight Education Service Center to provide cooperative purchasing service. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, or if somebody wants to break one out, I'll entertain that.
I'm going to approve the minutes, item number one.
I'll second that.
So you're wanting to discuss the other one separately?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, got a motion by Scott Kimball, seconded by Mike Kidd to approve the minutes from the council meeting on May tenth, twenty twenty-one and May twentieth, twenty-one. Any questions, discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Yeah, yeah, sure, sure, we're going to introduce new police officer.
Put him back to work.
Oh no, we, I had three officers over the last couple of months. And Taylor is actually a local, a local guy, he went to Joshua High School.
All right.
And graduated from Hill College, West Academy in late January, and came to work for us. Like it was very first day of May or right around there, so he's in field training. I think he's finishing up the first phase and he'll be on his own before you know it. And I'll try to get the other, the other two guys as their shifts fall in line with the council meeting and get them in here too.
Congratulations, glad to have you on board. All right, now, consider the interlocal agreement with the Region Eight Education Services Center to provide cooperative purchasing service. Mike, did you want to say something on that?
It's just another purchasing agreement similar to buy board to council of governments. He gives us an option to uh, gives us an option for pre-bid opportunities to purchase. I like what we do with several with office supplies and things currently. It's not a new deal to, because of some other issue, it's just another avenue that a lot of places use. We've come across some, some things that we're looking at for computers, off-state contract. And that's where a lot of this stuff is bid, so it gives us opportunities to move this campus.
Is there any cost to the city associated with this at all? This, this is one-sided agreement, we just get to jump in and, and work with them.
It, it's a, it's a government contracted agreement, so lots of people are in it. Just like, as long as we're a member of like council of governments like we are, it's something similar to that.
That was my biggest concern is every agreement's got two directions, so what's, what's coming back our way?
Now, buy board is usually the one that we pay a fee to use that service. Most of the other state contracts, they're going to cost us.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the interlocal agreement.
Okay. Got a motion by Mike Kidd, seconded by Rick DePree's to approve the interlocal agreement with the Region Eight Educational Service Centers to provide cooperative purchasing service. Any other questions? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Uh, next, discuss, consider and take possible action on appointment of a mayor pro temp. Uh, this is something that we do each year. It wasn't that Scott didn't want to do it anymore, it's just a requirement, but we have to do it every year. So if anybody would like to throw their hat in or Scott, if you're still up to the challenge?
Nominate Scott again.
I'll second that.
Got a motion.
I'm waiting for you to say that you do it.
That's right, we're not going to wait. I got a motion by Merle, seconded by Robert Fleming to appoint, reappoint Scott Kimball as Mayor Pro Temp. Any discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. This time I'm going to open up a public hearing at seven twelve. On a request to rezone a point five nine three acre of land known as Lot One, Block One, East Hills Edition in the J H Cooper survey abstract number one forty-five, County of Johnson, Texas, located at four oh two conveyor drive to change from C one restricted commercial to R two two-family residential development to allow for the construction of a duplex after the property is subdivided. Aaron?
Mayor and Council, the property was originally planted as Lot One, Block One, East Hills Edition. Future land use map shows this area as a low-density residential area. Property currently has a house-facing conveyor drive subdivision, but this lot will require the existing house to meet all setbacks, including the rear yard setback. This property is Zone C one restricted commercial. The proposed development of the property is to allow for the property to be subdivided for the construction of a duplex. This development will be required to submit engineering construction plans that will also be required to replant. City has agreed that these matters may be part of the destruction and planning review process. The proposed request complies with the future land use plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission has made a recommendation for approval on June seventh of twenty twenty-one.
Is the owner present? Okay, uh, was there anybody that was in favor of this? We receive any notices or anything else? Anybody against? All right, then we're going to close the public hearing at seven thirteen. And now we'll discuss, consider and take possible action on this ordinance. Does anybody have any questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Got a motion by Robert Fleming, seconded by Mike Kidd to approve ordinance rezoning five point nine three acres of land to change from C one restricted commercial district to R two two-family residential district to allow for the construction of a duplex after the property subdivided. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Next item.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on to item four, I request we go into executive session to have legal discussion with our city attorney.
Going to adjourn into executive session at seven fourteen. Oh, sorry. Oh, good, all right. We're going to discuss, considering, give direction regarding a request for Mountain Valley Country Club to reduce the speed limit to twenty miles per hour on clubhouse. I think, Mike, you've got some statistics now.
Yes, you're back on the eighteenth when the request was made for the uh, change to increase the speed limit from twenty miles per hour to thirty. We set out the counter to the traffic count, and that count determined that eighty-five percent of the vehicles were traveling at thirty-one miles per hour or less. So the decision was made to go ahead and increase that speed limit to thirty miles per hour. Since that time, we've received a request from Mrs. Zane, yes, from the country club asking that we reconsider um, the increase in speed limit. She also provided a, a list of a couple of uh, petition, I guess, from a combination of members of the club and residents in the area or, or some part there. So we sent the counters back out. It took a little bit of time, we had to get some updates done to it. And ultimately ended up replacing it, but we put the counter back out, did a seven-day count. And of that, eighty-five percent of the vehicles out of that count were traveling at thirty-two miles per hour or less. And so I, I guess you can make the argument either way that at twenty miles per hour or eighty-five percent of the vehicle or people were speeding eleven miles over the speed limit currently, eighty-five percent of them are, are speeding about one mile per hour over. We, we only had that one mile per hour change. But um, I think the concern was based on the letter was a cross, or not a crosswalk, but a cart path that crossed the street from the clubhouse onto the, the course. There was concern there that where it comes skinned out by the parking lot and some walking traffic, I think, as well. So we did the recount, we provided the information to y'all. They had asked that, have they been allowed to um, address the council, so we'll put it on.
I'll go ahead and do those now, uh, Tony Fuller. If you would state your name and address, please, now.
My name is Tony Fuller and I live at Winter State Shorewood Place here in Joshua. I am just right off of the um, golf course. So we do ride our golf course every day, back and forth to the golf course. And since the speed limit has been changed the past couple of months, we've been hitting early several times. Mostly vehicles coming over the top of the hill from the backside on the Burleson side. And people walking from the parking lot to go to the clubhouse where they're going to rent their cars. They're coming over so fast that as you're walking across, there's no one coming. But by the time you're in the middle of the street, there they are. And someone is really going to get killed. And I can tell you that, um, I don't know what time that they done these studies, but any given evening, you can go out there and you can see the cars, if it's thirty miles an hour, they're going to be going forty or fifty. If it's twenty miles an hour, they're going to be going thirty or forty, that's just the beginning of that. And um, it is, it's, it's getting really dangerous. And there are some older people that live on the course that are out there a lot that shuffle across that road. And I'm really afraid for them. And I don't know dropping the speed limit back down is going to help. I think we need more patrol out there for that. And I just don't want to see anyone get killed out there.
Thank you.
That's my concern, thank you.
Uh, Terry Flynn.
Over the same thing, the speed limit, oh, I'm Terry Flynn, I live at ten seventy three St. Andrews Drive, sorry. I personally had, I've also been almost hit twice. Once was going across the, from one hole to the next hole across in front of the course. And it was like the guy was playing chicken with me. I mean, I was trying, my cart won't go so fast. And I'm like halfway across, he, he's not stopping, he's not going to stop. He goes around me and another car's coming this way, and I'm stuck in the middle of the street, just sitting there thinking, what the heck, what am I going to do, you know, just hope I get across. That was one time. Another time it was down in Burbank. Another time it was down in Burleson, off of Shoreline, I was going home, and I go across in front of a street called Shoreline, I'm going straight, this street's here. And somebody's coming down the country club, well, I'm going and fixing, I don't have a stop sign or anything, do you see a stop sign? I don't know what the law is, but a car's coming here, and I'm going straight, he cuts right in front of me. I mean, I'm hanging so close to being hit and tumping over, because I was skinny on my brakes to try to not hit him or the other car that was sitting at the red light, stop sign. I'm afraid too that somebody's gonna get hit, there's a lot of kids that ride, I don't know that, I don't know if the law is on that, it's probably illegal, but they ride the carts out there all the time, and it's really dangerous. And it surprises me that when you did the thing, that it only did that to thirty-one, because when it was twenty, yeah, they would go thirty, ten miles or eleven miles over. But now it just really seems like they're going ten or eleven miles over thirty, I guess, for my, because of your study, it sure seems like that. And it's like, they don't care if somebody's in the middle of the road or not, or, you know, we'll sit there and wait, nobody's gonna stop, but a few people will. But I just, I'm really scared somebody's gonna get killed too. And like, there are a lot of older people, I'm old, but there are people that are a lot older than me that play out there. And I do worry about them, and I worry about the kids that are out there too. Because even when I would go twenty down that road, all the time, I mean, almost every time I go twenty down that road, there's somebody's riding my bumper, my tail end, or they're gonna, they're gonna pass me, they're gonna go around me, which that happens all the time. So, I mean, I don't know what the answer is, I just wish that y'all would reconsider changing it back to twenty, or maybe help out. And I don't know if you could put maybe some kind of sign, blinky, you know, watch for golfers or pedestrian, you know, walkers and all that thing, or a speed bump. I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, but I just, I would like to ask y'all to reconsider the speed limit back to twenty.
Thank you.
So you did fine.
Does he have a question? What, did you fill out a form?
I'll come back to you in a minute, Tom Donaldson.
Hi, I'm Tom Donaldson, my address is nineteen oh three Boogleton Drive in Harlingen. I'm a member of the club. I don't know why, to begin with, it was even considered raising the speed limit. I assume maybe y'all had some complaints from people to make, but I don't know. I looked at your study that showed a few people going over forty-one, you know, forty-one, which is the enforcement limit, I think. But ninety-two percent of people are going over twenty miles an hour, which is the desired limit. There are people, you know, everybody that plays golf here crosses the road in their cart or on foot at least four times, because it divides, you know, the front and back, the clubhouse and the parking lot. So anytime I play golf, I gotta go across there, the clubhouse, then play that side, back across, back across. So there's quite a bit of traffic, there's people walking their dogs, there's ladies pushing strummers down there. There are a lot of the members drive their carts from their homes to the, you know, so they're going on that street, you know, doing ten, fifteen miles an hour in their golf cart. I know it may make a little inconvenience for a few people that the speed limit is, is lower, but, you know, it, the amount of road in question is about a quarter of a mile. At thirty miles an hour, it takes thirty seconds to travel that quarter of a mile. At twenty miles an hour, it takes forty-five seconds, so it's fifteen-second inconvenience for people. You know, which is certainly not worth the risk. Sooner or later, somebody's gonna get hurt, and it's gonna, it's gonna reflect well on the city. I don't know what liability the city may have in a situation like that, but I really think the best remedy would be speed bumps. You know, that will, that'll be, you know, you can raise the limit to eighty then, if you put some speed bumps in. Because that will slow them down, you know, but, you know, it's, it's, you know, the speed limit's been twenty-four years, and it's never been a problem. I just think that we're taking way too much risk for so very little benefit to anybody.
Thank you. Mike, out of curiosity, like up at the school, we've got the hill on the crosswalk that says, you know, you gotta yield if somebody's in the crosswalk. Do we have one of those signs at this location?
We do have those signs, we haven't put anything up when this came, because we couldn't see.
But those signs were already there, then you have to yield if somebody's in the intersection?
They're not there now, no.
Oh.
But we can put them there. And then we also ordered some smaller ones to put, I mean, off of the cart path, warning about crossing traffic and things like that. We do have signs that can be put there. Power the outside.
Yeah, I mean, one more small thing, I mean, I did look at y'all's study, and all it looked at was the street traffic, had nothing to do with pedestrian traffic or golf cart traffic. So, you know, to me, that study was very incomplete. If you wanna, you know, consider speed limits, you'd need to consider all the factors. And, you know, all they were looking at is the speed that cars are driving, and had very, you know, had very little to do with, you know, pedestrian or golf cart traffic, which, which should've been probably the major concern more than the car traffic.
Just to answer that, I mean, residential speed limit is thirty miles an hour, where you've got sidewalks and the residences and everything, so that's pretty standard speed limit.
Yeah, but most residential, most residential streets do not have the street, have the pedestrian or golf cart traffic that that one does.
But that's a plus for y'all, that's, you know, it's not necessarily for everybody. And the city of Burleson actually has the majority of that street, Joshua has a very small percentage.
Who is responsible for the speed limit?
Well, just, we're only responsible for, for the portion of it that's in the city limits of Joshua.
And the part right in front of the clubhouse is.
That is in the city limits of Joshua.
And that is pretty much the area that's mostly in question. And so, you know, it's really probably more of a situation for Joshua to consider in city of Burleson. I don't think this, I'm not even sure exactly where the speed limit, I don't have anything, city limits run there. But, you know, if y'all are the ones that made the decision to increase the speed limit, then this would be all make the decisions lower, and it's gonna be done. And so, you know, I think really a better remedy would be speed bumps.
Well, that's not gonna happen, probably. Thank you.
Well, in our policy on speed bumps, that person that wants them pays.
Yeah, has to pay for it. They have to do, have to do a traffic study, and then whoever's wanting it has to pay for the speed bump to go in. You had a question?
I just wonder on the study, how many times do you see people going sixty down that road? I've lived there since ninety-seven, and there's people constantly lining up down that street.
Were they doing it back in ninety-seven, too?
Yes, I'm saying.
So the speed limit doesn't really make a lot of difference. But it's tw- I mean, I'm asking you, if twenty or thirty, you're saying it's all what they're driving sixty, then the speed limit didn't really make a difference.
It does make difference, because people let their off on driving ten miles over the speed limit, so it's thirty, they go drive forty.
The study didn't show that, though.
But also where you guys did put the box, it's also where the street comes out, and so it's, it's where another street connects. It's not where they have the clubhouse, the clubhouse is way further up the road. It's where the box was actually placed, it is very possible that the people are only doing thirty, because people are coming out at the same time they're going down the road. Where the traffic is being so heavy, it's further up the road towards the clubhouse. So you have at least like a quarter mile to a half mile up the road is where the clubhouse is. So where you're seeing the heavy traffic, it's not down the road where that, where that box was, because I paid attention to it to see when it was actually up, because I worked there. And so whenever you see the speeding, it's further up the road towards the hill or coming down the hill. It's not all the way down there where the box is.
Where's the box placement?
I don't have the address, so that I can check and find out. I told them to put it where the.
Crosswalk is?
No, where the road comes out, where the super plant is.
Okay, yeah.
I told them to put it there.
Yeah.
We'll find out for, depending on where the access was. But I can find that out.
Alright, you made us anything? Scott, you have anything?
Well, the stretch which, well, we're talking about is about two hundred feet long. You know, I've lived in Mountain Valley for twenty-plus years, I've gone up and down that road, I don't know how many times. And I've never had to stop for a golf cart, I've had to stop for pedestrians maybe once or twice in, in, in twenty-some odd years. The, the amount of foot traffic that you guys are describing is like a constant flow, and it's, it's not there.
There's a lot of people crossing that street during the day, it's not a constant flow. There's members of the club, there's, you know, big players at the club, we sit at Joshua High School, boys and girls, same way down there.
It just takes one person, and that's a lot.
And, and there's, there's responsibility, you know, personal responsibility, the people driving are responsible for that. And like we said, whether it's thirty miles an hour or twenty miles an hour, people are gonna go over that.
Exactly.
So, so, so that, that limits not what the problem is, the problem is everybody needs to be paying attention to what's going on. I think the signs for the pedestrian walk, you know, stop for pedestrians and crossing, I think that's a good idea. I think this golf, club needs to put up a sign, double-check before you cross the road.
You do.
You know?
Like me, I'm halfway through there, the guy's coming so fast, I was, I mean, he wasn't there when I started crossing, I do look both ways. Sixty-three years, I don't know how to cross a street.
And, and then, and then.
He was, he was gonna hit, I mean, I thought he was gonna hit me.
They're coming out of that Mountain Valley Lake subdivision, they're coming down over that hill. The, the only thing that's going to slow anything down through there, like the gentleman said, is speed bumps. And it's something that the scene would have to consider paying for. It depends on what type, type to put in, and so on and so forth, you know? But that, that would be something that we could investigate and give them that information, Mike?
We can give you information, we also have some that we put out as tests where we install them for a period of time, and then we count them, do the counts periodically to find out how effective they were, and whether they reduced or the hills limit was having effect at all.
And I, I can think of the signs that you were speaking of, you taught, that, you know, there is nothing there for people, but most of the time, if you're looking at people that are driving, going up, they're on their phones anyway. But I think the people that, you know, maybe sometimes, that they would catch their eye and be like, oh, I need to watch, you know?
One thing we just got looking at, city manager and I today, were some signs that they had the speed limit, but they're actually flashing. If you're going over the speed limit, it's flashing, and then once you get out in speed, it says, thank you, you know? Do you think the country club would be willing to pay for one of those signs to put them up? Well, I mean, that's, she was the one that brought the petition in, and like I said, it's fifty-four hundred bucks for two of them. Fifty-four hundred dollars for two, so you put one on either end. Yeah, well, these are electronic signs, and they also keep up with the data, they'll track how fast the cars were going, but it'll do the speed limit on every car. So if you're doing forty miles an hour, when you're approaching that sign, and the speed limit says thirty, it's gonna start flashing. And it won't stop flashing until you drop to below the speed limit. And I've been around several towns where they have those, and they're very effective, because when you're coming up to it and you're seeing that light flashing, you know you're going too fast, and you slow down.
I would imagine the speed bump would cost less than fifty-four hundred dollars.
I doubt that, and quite honestly, where we put the speed bumps up, it was overwhelming that the people wanted them taken out. The damage to the cars, the damage to their physical well-being. Pardon?
There's no doubt of that.
No, I beg to differ with you, you go over those things at five miles an hour, and it still bumps you pretty good. You don't understand. Yep.
Did you say they would register the speed?
Yes.
Like you said, one would be going forty, and it would drop down.
Right.
But there's, can you go back and look at how many people are coming down there?
I know it keeps up with the data, so I'm not sure whether it says, okay, there was this many people that approached at forty miles an hour, and they stayed at forty, or whether they got down to the proper speed. That, I'm not sure, we just happened to see this flyer yesterday, I think, and we could sure look into that, because.
There, there's a software package that comes with them, Bluetooth, you can drive by, punch, it'll download the data, tell you how many cars, I don't know how, how long it counts. It'll give you a breakdown of this many cars are driving this fast, it goes in like five mile per hour increments, it'll tell you how fast they were.
I don't know, the other thing that we started doing with family nights on Saturday nights, where people come and do outdoor games and watch movies, still the more at nighttime, I just don't want, because just don't want people with kids that are crossing the road going and getting their cars.
We have that all over town, I mean.
It's true, we do.
The thing about, it, it comes to enforcement, and as again, as, we had speed bumps in my neighborhood, and the only thing that did, they hit the speed bump, and it was back on the gas to make up for that lost time. They're just not very efficient, and it stops the people for that particular spot. In our subdivision, we had two of them that were about a hundred yards apart. And I mean, they hit the first one, floored it, slammed it on the brakes for the second one, then floored it again. So unless you had a speed bump that was about ever ten feet going through that whole area, like I said, I just don't see that it's gonna do any good.
If they were placed right by the golf carts and pedestrian traffic, that was a pretty, pretty narrow area.
Well, and I thought that was what you were saying, that wasn't the only area.
Well, there's a pretty narrow area where most of the. Well, a lot of times, where golf carts and pedestrian traffic, it's not the only area, but there, you know, probably with a fifty to a hundred-foot stretch, is pretty much where all the pedestrian and golf cart traffic. The speed bumps was, was, you know, one or two speed bumps there would be.
Anybody else have any questions, concerns? Let's toss the speed bumps, Mike.
Depending on the width of the road, they're anywhere from seven hundred fifty to a thousand dollars. It depends on how wide, they come in two feet sections. We place them, they're rubber for two and a half inches in high. They go up, they flatten out for about eighteen inches, and they come back down. When you hit them, you know you've hit them.
How much does it cost for the signage to be posted for? For the bumps and everything?
No, they, that was, we did a race crosswalk there. What we're talking about is what was in Joshua Meadows. Sure. Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's two and a half inches tall. And our, our concern was that we don't, we don't allow, what we do are speed humps, we don't allow a bump. Bumps are rounded about six inches where when you hit it, your cavities fall out, and you start saying bad words. But they also tend to bounce people off roads if they're going too fast. We have a lot of streets in Joshua that are not curved, that have barges, so we won't put them on streets with, without a curve, things like that, because we don't wanna bounce cars off the, off the runway. So depending on, and plus, it has to meet certain criteria to be permanently put there, based on an engineering study. We can do tests, we can put them out, we can test it. But like I was saying, more times than not, what we get is inundated with complaints, because most people just don't like them.
Sure, the claim got changed to thirty is because. I'm assuming, I don't know why it got changed to thirty.
I'm saying convenience was, was it the big one instead of thirty?
I don't know why it got changed.
I don't know, it was brought up for discussion, and they asked for the study, and we did it, based on that, the city made the change.
You know, there's, and not just the residents, back in that area, now that, that that is opened up back there, you can come off of one seventy-four, and take a shortcut through there to get to thirty-five. So that, people are trying to get, they're not just speeding in front of the country club.
Yeah, you're coming up.
Residential area too, with cars on those sides.
You're coming up the road, up in that, because it's homes by town, development goes all the way up.
Yes, sir, yes. Well, I mean, if you could walk out right there and somebody.
We, we, obviously, we have signs that we can put up there, we, I mean, we can start trying some things, and we can do, the recounts are easy to do.
Increase patrols.
We can get back on schedule, we, we can certainly ask PD to patrol the areas, especially where we know that some of the peak times where y'all come out there to troll them.
Friday and Saturday.
Especially in the evening when y'all got kids out there, we can ask them to increase in there, but I'm sure they're happy to do that. We can put that request into them, and then.
Well, golf carts are hard to get license plates for, but we are street legal. Lots and blinkers and horns and that kind of stuff.
I'm just meaning any kids that get caught riding golf carts down the street.
I agree.
One can of worms might open up another can of worms.
Right, I think you need to be, have a driver's license. Right, I think you need to be, have a driver's license.
I think we should entertain, you know, at least doing, holding it over till next month and, and.
Yeah, do some more, do some studies, put the box, like she suggested, right there, uh, where the crosswalk is. Uh, look at, if we, did we take the signs down before? Did we have some?
Any of the signs?
No, the, the ones about if there's a pedestrian in the walk, you've got to, you know, the cars have some.
We, we can.
Give us some cost on those, yeah.
I mean, that's.
Because we can put that on a solar system and give us what the cost to put those in there and then.
You would plan to do a test?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, what I'm saying, yeah, if, if there's somebody in that crosswalk, you, you better stop.
Something visual, something visual where people are catching their eye will pay more attention to the, oh.
We, we've got the line green signs that we put up there, eighteen by twenty-four, so they'll point out the crosswalk, we can light them if you are black.
Because I've been on it, uh, just go to this pause of. On family and country club, you gotta throw the mic in his mouth.
Go ahead and take her down.
Yeah.
It's a one, we're all bald now. Is there a contact person at the club? Should we reach out to Mrs. Zing or if there's someone else?
Yeah.
Is there a club manager or somebody?
Um, I'm a manager, but she's, she doesn't know her.
All right, why don't you, who's easier to get a hold of, you or her? Leave us some contact information when you leave, when you, with Amber, we'll, uh, we'll get, we'll get you a plan, watch something happen.
You bet, and we'll have this on the agenda next month, if you may get that information. All right, next item is to discuss, consider, and take possible action on an administrative service agreement between ICMA Retirement Corporation and City of Joshua adopting a four-five-seven B plan to be offered to city employees. Amber.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank y'all.
Sure.
But so currently, we only have one. Uh, so currently, we have one four fifty-seven B plan. I don't know if you're familiar with what they offer, and the private sector, they're very similar to that four oh one K plan, but because we're government employees, we have access to a four fifty-seven plan. And it allows, um, additional withdrawal or less restrictions on withdrawal periods and stuff like that. There's a lot of great things with it. Um, when I came, I noticed that we just had the one plan, there's not much of an option for employees to choose. And these plans don't cost the city any, uh, money, but the employee, as they contribute, they are charged, uh, fees based on the entity that they choose. So, um, most cities, you'll see that they have ICMA RC. So I thought if, as we bring on new employees from other cities in the future, I would like to at least give them an option to carry on what they have. So, I, I know Chief Shore also, uh, has ICMA and would love to see it continued as well, but, uh, comparing fees to what we currently have, uh, ICMA's fees are quite a bit more. I just, I'd like to be able to give employees an extra option than to just have the one plan.
So it doesn't cost us anything, and you're unable to contribute to that?
Yeah, he can start another plan, but.
Maybe the, actually, which what you, what you have costs the employee more, but everybody charges fees for, for ICMA is a little bit less cost, and they have a lot of different, different options for employees. Neither will some part of the, through, through, it's, it's all employee contribution.
Yeah, some cities have three and four different plans, it just, I would, I think it would be good to have, give an employee an option for.
I agree.
Is this something that the council really needs to make a decision on? Or is it just another benefit plan?
Yeah, there's the contract too, and it does.
Contract, yeah, there's a contract, and if somebody wants to see it.
Well, what is the contract for?
For them to provide the investment services.
Payroll deductions and rest to city.
Okay.
If they are payroll.
Because you're already doing that with the four oh one, I mean, the, uh.
Yeah.
We have another one similar to this, just not quite as good, and then we have TMRS, which is the, well, the city participates in.
There's no cost incurred with the, or finance.
Consider that.
It's not an added fee for them to take care of the four and a payroll. Okay.
Well, Terry, one question I had, only thing that made me nervous about, I think it's a great program, was the indemnification. In other words, you're saying, you know, they're not responsible for anything, but it's like they can come back to the city. And, you know, maybe that's standard, I don't know, it was on, like, number nine, paragraph nine, or section nine, indemnification. And I just want to make sure, you know, the city's not picking up any liability.
We're not, because this, this is a standard contract ICMA uses, under the text of the constitution, we are constitutionally prohibited from indemnifying any private corporation. So even if it's in an agreement.
Okay, got you, all right, good. That was the only question I had on the whole day, I think it's a good program and, uh.
Would, would our employees be able to move money from the current four fifty-seven plan over to this?
They can have, uh, multiple plans, but the annual contribution limits are set by the, they, they still, no matter how many plans, they still can't go over the threshold of.
That they can move, they can move funds between the two plans?
Um.
Two different companies.
I mean, I guess you could, like, you could, like, I have a, um, 401K when I was in the private sector that I rolled into a Roth IRA, because they're both pre-tax funds, I can actually now take my Roth and roll it into this with pre-tax. But, so technically, if somebody else, say, I came on last year and I went ahead and did the, the four fifty-seven plan with tax advisors, because they're all pre-tax funds, I wouldn't be able to.
But, I mean, this has better fees and everything, and my money was there, I didn't want to roll it over, and the one is, is be the better deal.
As long as it's a pre-tax fund.
I'm going to, we allow, and allow the city manager to sign the contract?
Yep.
I'll second that.
And then motion by Scott Kimball, seconded by Robert Fleming to just, uh, approve the administrative service agreement between ICMA Retirement Corporation and City of Joshua adopting a four fifty-seven B plan to be offered to city employees. Any other discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero, and this is Amber Knight. Uh, discuss, consider, and take possible action on a resolution adopting a new purchasing policy. Amber.
Uh, when I came on, I've been here for almost three months now, I noticed that the purchasing policy that we have was fairly old. Um, I really didn't find, found a word document, um, not really sure when it was last. That was, it's one of the one, um, in two thousand, it was last revised in two thousand eleven, so our other policy lacks, um, anything, very, it had very little in it about cooperative or interlocal agreements, and it is just lacking, like, with the purchase of policies, things change, laws change. The biggest change with this, what I noticed when I came on, we have to do purchase orders for every single thing, even if it's five dollars. So every time, uh, one of the animal control officers needs a rabies vaccine, she's having to send me, um, a purchase order request, we sign off of it. I send it to Shawna, Shawna signs off of it, Shawna sends that back over to animal control, now she can go buy it. So it, it, I've changed it to where anything under five hundred dollars, it kind of does away with that. Um, my thought is if I can't trust my employees to spend over five hundred dollars, then they probably shouldn't be here. But I think everybody here is great, they know what money they have in their budget, I don't think we really go over on these, especially small items like that, but I would like to see the other process. Um, it not only would it help the departments, but it really reduces the amount of people where it goes across on us and.
Does it pose any problems with accounting, with, you know, putting the, the line item in the right spot, like the vaccine or something, and then you have to go in a certain section, so.
You would still have to do, um, depending on.
Still have paperwork involved to take that five, less than five hundred dollars and allocate where it actually came from.
The other, one of the other things we're gonna be discussing are the P cards or the purchasing card. So, uh, those P cards will give them the option, according to policy, whatever the policy states in that dollar now, um, in question, they can either use a purchasing card to purchase it. So then they would, that would show on their credit card statement, and that we would still follow the same process. Um, it would be coded to the correct yield, finance would process it, or, uh, we've already paid for it, and they're gonna invoice us for it, same process, still go to, uh, finance, they're gonna code it to the right yield. So really, the same process, but it removes that extra step out.
Complete the price form.
Yes, yeah, everything still, still, there's still gonna be a paper trail, we're not, that receipts are still required, we're still monitoring whether or not they're paying sales tax, and, um, this, just to me, straight lines it. Um, I think you can kind of attest to, I was just really surprised for like tiny little things, like even to run a Walmart to go get, you know, like, or, it's, you don't have reoccurring items, so it just, it will save a ton of paper and a lot of time, especially with something that's like, oh crud, we're out of toilet paper, now I need to run to the store, but wait, I need to do. So, and then not mention the system that we have moved to FundU, it doesn't allow you to uncover funds, so essentially, we're doing all this extra work in the system that you do anymore, so. Uh, we are hoping that FundU will, and get that implemented, but FundU is for you and some of the.
We're using the policy, I did not see any, where any, anything in here where, and maybe I dismissed it, where it requires those receipts to be turned in.
It's in the P card policy.
Okay, it was actually in the P card, uh, and then anything that won't go on the P card has to still go through the PO process, correct?
Anyhow, I don't know. So there's the purchase orders that require, that allow us to uncover the money prior to purchasing it, but, uh, I would like to, that's not always feasible in some cases, but I would like to change up how we do things. Um, currently, right now, finance does a lot of the paperwork, a lot of the coding, and most departments have department admins, so I'd like to see some of that workload brought off of them, where it's initial, it's initially done in the department, and then once finance gets it, they double check it and key it into the system. We have the capability to do it, we just, it's new, and if we change this up, doing the way those queues under five hundred dollars, it would make it a lot more.
So, so each person's P card has an unlimited?
Yeah.
Like I said, so.
And that's the thing that I really like about the P cards, is that you can be controlled, we have a law, but we can discuss that. No, and really, right now, um.
Should, shouldn't the, the, the general purchasing policy also include the item about requiring receipts?
This is more for, like, local government requirements, or that's.
Yeah, this is, generally speaking, most cities will have, like, P cards in their administrative policies, and, and this is more all in state law, but when you're required to bid, not required to bid, some of those types of issues is, it's not a hands-on, here's how you do this, it's more taking into account those sorts, those types of issues that are state law, and we'll follow state law.
Select your professional services, whether or not it needs to have three bids or to go out for a public bid, um, different bonding requirements, um. Having the attorney review contracts and stuff, or, it, it lays out who's able to sign off on what it was, or not to, so it really, it really defines it much better than what we.
Rest of the questions? Will entertain a motion?
I'm a much, yeah, can't sit.
Got a motion by Merbattenstein, singing about Angela Nichols to approve the new purchasing policy. Any other questions, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Uh, discuss, consider, and take possible action on a resolution amending the personnel policy. We're gonna postpone that till July or August.
Do you, uh, do you want to postpone it, or do you want, I think Natasha made changes to it, and then how did you want to handle it? Do you want to bring it fully again, or have?
Well, make the changes and send it out, and you can be doing that over the next month or two, and then we can, uh, bring it up, you know, with the changes in, like I said, July or August, which everyone works out best.
Would it be possible to send out the changes that you redlined, so, so we can see what we're changing?
Right, next item is discuss, consider, and take possible action on implementing the city purchasing cards, P cards, and guess who, Amber.
What we just did?
No, but they're sort of go hand in hand now.
So with city purchasing cards right now, we currently, we would have Bank of America, and they're just our credit card. Yes, we probably can set limits on it, but I can go anywhere, pretty much buy whatever I want. With, uh, purchasing cards, um, they look at the NCC, NCC code, which is basically a merchant ID. So, um, if I go into just a straight liquor store, it's not gonna work in there, because it recognizes that specific code. Um, we had an instance, uh, last year where we ordered, uh, flowers for a funeral, uh, for one of the employees that passed away, it kicked it back because it was not, that was not on there. So it's, uh, you, you can set your own codes, there are standard codes that they do fit in there, but you can change it and set it, so you should be able to buy, like, meals, like, if you're on, uh, going away to training, you can buy gas with it. Um, you can buy and go to a homey, go Walmart, eat you can, they're pretty typical places, but if I go and try to play golf or something, it's probably gonna be like, nope, sorry, it'll work for hotels, but, um, you, as a planned administrator for it, you set an employee up with it, you choose their limits. Um, if they need to go and make an emergency purchase, I can log in real quick and put a timeframe in there to raise it whatever amount. Um, and I agree with Mike, not everybody should have a credit card, but I also don't want somebody that works, like, on a weekend and has a piece of equipment breakdown, not have some way to go and get a park or something, or animal control, say they had an emergency blood bill on a Saturday, and she has no way to go through it because everything's here, so. Not only is there more control with it, um, there is a, um. Rebates, so based on spend, uh, annual spend, we do get rebates back on these cards, depending on what the annual spend is. So whereas we're not getting that with other things, I would like to see as far as account, accounts payable goes, like, reoccurring charges that we pay every single month, I would like to set up, they call it a, a ghost card, it doesn't have a magnetic strip on the back, it simply has a number. So say if we, like, our antivirus that we pay for every month would go on there, then whatever, whatever reoccurring charges we may have, we would stick on there, um, instead of having a month on my card or my card, centralizes it, and plus, we get, more we use it, more money we make that off of it. So they do, uh, buy annual rebates, they do them twice.
Raise the fees.
Uh, well.
Is it, is it a charge, like a current credit card?
It's like a credit card, so as long as the balance is paid on time, uh, there's no fee for it.
Well, there's, there's a transaction fee with every credit card transaction, that the merchant pays for accepting the credit card. So is that, is that still?
This is just like the quote, where you get your rebates, though, you know, if you use such and such a card, you get so much back. Now, does this eliminate the sales tax issue, or do we still have a sales tax issue?
There's no way that they can turn that on or off, but what they have been doing is they actually print the tax ID on the card, uh, and they can put a city logo on it, so it puts it more in your face, and it can help a person with the card, maybe remember. Just sometimes, uh, like with Walmart, they give you a little card and you take it with you, and they just, they don't add taxes, but some places, they're like, well, what's your tax ID? I mean, employees don't know what your tax ID is, they just don't, correct? So if it's right there on the card, it should cut down on it, but to me, internally, we need to start, um, kind of hammering that in their minds, like, look, that we don't pay sales tax, and then make them do the legwork to go get it back.
How many employees are we talking about having these cards?
Um, I wish it definitely department has, not a signature, um, I would say, I don't know how many.
What's the amount of the rebate that you see us getting?
It depends on, so he explained this to me a little bit, so it looks at the entire state of Texas spend, and it, it determines the flat rate, and then it somehow trickles down, and they look at our annual spend or by annual spend, so it depends on spend.
It should be some estimate.
He does stump me like this, because probably in all these papers, like, maybe.
Yeah, I didn't see it. Yes.
So there's pricing there on here, under contract review. It, it is based, it is based on Texas, and it, this first, uh, of where they determine is overall, whole state, so they use.
But I mean, like, is it something like, it's one percent of all your purchases for the year, or?
It depends on what state of Texas spends, so I can't, there's really no, I mean, I can probably get an average.
So if they send us a dollar, we just have to take them at their word?
Well, I mean, I'm sure we could ask. But so, I mean, I guess that would be hard to answer because what they're looking at initially is state of Texas.
Right.
And that's going to.
That's my only question that was. Yeah, it was, in other words, we're going to this program, we're good, all this money back, but we don't know how much money, you know, just sort of. It may be that, I don't know. All right, anybody else get any questions?
The rebate money would go back into the general fund?
No.
No, you're going to buy as a gift with.
Buy your shirt.
With the dollar?
Everything that comes in the door goes in the general fund. You then move it as you choose.
I'd like to make a motion when we approve this.
I'll second this.
You got a motion by Mike Kidd, seconded by Scott Kimball to approve implementing the city purchasing card. Any other questions? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Amber, you can sit down now.
In the, those personnel policies, there is a purchasing policy for those key cards too. So there are multiple layers of that. I guess you could.
As long as they all line up.
Yep. All right. Next item is discuss, consider, and take possible action on board appointments. I think we had an opening on the type A. And we have one person, Alicia Hayes, that is requested to be on the type A. She's a professor at the University of North Texas. So this is an opening. This isn't an alternate. This is an actual.
On the type A board?
Yes. And that was one she was willing to serve on and she has lived in the city for a year. Entertain a motion to put her on there. A motion by Merle, thinking about Mike Kidd to appoint Alicia Hayes to the type A economic board. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Staff reports. Anybody have any questions on staff reports? Yep.
Six zero. I'm, I'm, I, I have a problem voting for somebody for a position that's not here to introduce themselves to us.
Okay.
So.
I'll amend that to six zero. We have not made that a requirement. If we need to do that.
I, I know. That's something that I've been thinking about.
Six one or six zero?
Six zero. He said he was abstaining.
I really can't abstain. I've been roused for extension. I'm abstaining.
Okay. So the vote is six zero. All right. Staff reports. Anybody have any questions on staff reports?
I wish Chief Griffith was here. I love his report.
Yeah.
I love the way he broke it down.
Yes, I will about. He's at the ESDV smack of the. Yesterday, I think it was around seven, seven thirty, more somewhere around that. Call came in, there's a structured fire, fire going through the house. The lady snatches up dogs and cats and talking to the ESD dispatch center all throughout all this. And by the time she got out the door and settled, the first truck was pulling down the road down in Bond to a well-involved garage, a quarter of the house. It belonged to Darren Beck, who chairs on our type A board. Of course, he was already at work. Everybody was out. Nobody was hurt. They made a fantastic stop on the house, considering most of it is under destruction being remodeled or open stud walls open clear up to the rafters. And they got in and first two trucks on, one from Joshua. They really did a stop on it. Clear as a, maybe even more in the house than Darren hopes, but they did a, did a little good job. Couple cities coming out, there's no fire hydrants down there. So we showed them. Less, less than a minute response time. They, it just happened to catch it when all going crew was still there, oncoming crews there.
And I saw in your email that there is ongoing investigation.
They believe that it started in the garage. I, there was a air conditioning unit sitting in a window there. It all looked like that it started from there in that area. He's had trouble with little varmints chewing up stuff in there. He had some traps set. That may be part of which I haven't heard it defended, but I do believe it was electrical starting in the back.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Please give Chief in the Department our accommodations. That's great. Great to hear. Well, Kelly.
Congratulations to you, Chief, for getting the three officers.
Yeah, good job. It's amazing what money can do, isn't it? Darren, I see this Los Galindas is on the future new business. Are they really going to open it up this time or?
Well, I hope so. He's, I mean, a few times, but then he never calls for the time to see all the expenses.
Right.
I've seen people in there working.
Okay, good.
Which one's this?
This is that one where, oh, Nelson's barbecue used to be. Yeah. Yes, station, yeah.
Yeah, I think the last time he called, he came and opened out his.
Right.
He thought the church, you know, it was going to be.
Sorry.
Yeah, he'll have to get a variance to get the alcohol because he's by a church.
I don't think, but he's by a schoolyard.
Yeah, 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 that's right. Yeah, our ordinance, well, our ordinance says so many feet from the front door to the front door. So we'll have to just measure that.
And the state said, tells us we're how to measure.
Right.
And then daycare is a little bit different.
Yeah, it's a church, a daycare, and a school.
It was denied there once before.
Yeah.
They, the daycare is, you know, a hundred feet from it.
Yeah.
Front door to front door. So it's just at the other end of the building.
Any other questions on reports? Anybody have any future agenda item requests?
I would like to ask if it's possible for us to talk. Speaking of, speaking about this, kind of got me going about it. Joshua Christian Academy is right there on the highway. Is that our responsibility for, to, to add or take away from a school zone? Because that's never been a school zone and that's a school.
No, that's up to the state. That's what I would say before.
So then would it be up to us to discuss it and ask the state?
We have asked them before. Have they not? They talked about a school zone and a crosswalk. For whatever reason, they, they didn't do it. We can request it again. And we put the school zone on country club beside it. But we could, we could do it on the same.
So then we can, though, make a request again to the state?
Sure.
Can you request us to be on the next agenda for discussions?
Is that what we should do?
Yes.
Yep.
You could probably do better if we made an official request that's.
From the council?
Sanctioned by the council to do.
All right. Well, let's do that.
I wouldn't have done that before.
We have.
I think we did, yeah.
It's, I don't remember how long it's been. The school came and asked us if we would do that.
I was here when we were petitioning to do it.
I think part of the, the reason that they didn't was when they went out and monitored. And I don't know how they monitored, but they said that there was no traffic. Turning in and out on one, no school traffic, turning in and out on one seventy four is all on country club. That was, I think that's the way I recall the basis of the decision, but I, we can double check.
I think these country clubs are parking a lot of way.
And we can ask them again.
Wonder if they consider any.
You have that parking lot in the back behind the church. That's where everybody goes to pick up.
But they stop on country club.
All right, we can really be discussing this. We're supposed to, we request it, we're going to put it on the agenda, so. That's that.
We might even get, uh, heard it come.
I did have a question about the city park. It was brought up a couple of meetings ago about renaming the city park and talking about that and discussing it. Was naming it after Ken Keppel. Were we going anywhere with that?
Well, I've got a draft naming policy that's almost finished. It's, unfortunately, I haven't set by the way side, but I've got one that's pretty close to. I could probably get that draft ready if you guys take a look at it. Thanks.
I just lost my mind, so I was, what were we writing?
Yeah, let me, I'll see if I can get that polished up and get that to you guys. We'll send it out a little. I'll send that out a little ahead of time, outside of the package, so you've got time to chew on it a little bit.
Hey, somebody? Good.
Nor, or, y'all, there's also those, not a lot of, down in other parts of the state, but a couple cones. Storm drains, when we had all this rain or thing, that's flooding around the yards and everything down the street. And our storm drains are causing some sanding there. It's, you got that screen wire stuff in there?
Sorry, talking like about that.
It's just clogged up. We don't have water to get in.
Well, they're not supposed to be there, Chris, and I, Mayor and I discussed that, was it yesterday? So I sent something to Chris and asking him to go ahead and check where we've got developments, those down. Once the development around there is done.
We have to change the map.
It's a, it's a developer's responsibility, but once the houses around it are done, like those are, they need to take a lot more. So we'll, we'll just have to take them. We've got some in Wildwood.
We mark and some of the waters.
I, yeah, that, yeah, that's what happens in Wildwood. It goes over Main Street instead of going into the tension. So he's, he's watching those. Unfortunately, we're down to two people in the front of the boards right now. And so they're, they're still trying to catch up with potholes and all grass. But we'll, we'll get to them.
All right. Anything else? Then we're adjourned at eight fifteen.